Is that recording? Okay, I'm recording now. Um. Let's see. Um, so, oh. I'm doing, right now I'm doing chapter six. I don't know. So, um. Cos of pi over three is a half. So if anyone has any questions, I guess you can ask it to everyone. So is a half and then sine pi over three is root three over two. So plus root three over two i. Right? And so this is just one plus root three i. Okay, that's our first solution. Oh, so our first solution is negative two. Our second solution is one plus root three i. And then finally, our final solution is going to be two times cos five pi over three plus sine five pi over three i. I should really choose which side to put the i on. I keep switching it back and forth. Um, I will choose the, I should choose the right side. That's the correct side. Doesn't make a difference, but. Should be consistent. So this one is a half again, so two times a half plus, oh, it's probably gonna be the same thing. Or maybe, oh, I'd be surprised if it was exactly the same. Negative root three over two. Negative root three over two i. So it's gonna be one minus root three i. And so then our actual factors to factor x cubed plus eight as a product of linear factors, well, that's just gonna be, so x plus two, right? So flip the sign. X minus one minus root three i. And x minus one plus root three i. Uh, sorry, i should be on the inside of the bracket there. And there you go. And I'm gonna check that. Uh, I hope number five, uh, chapter six. Chapter six, oops. So this was six point three point five. Yes, so x plus two, root three i plus one, root three minus one minus i. They just wrote it really weird for some reason. They've moved some of the root threes around and not the other ones. I don't know. But yes, the same answer. Same thing. So they, that's a solution for that one. Um, three, six point three point eight. So I'm actually gonna just, since we're here. Is my phone? My phone's somewhere else? Okay, I don't know where my phone is. So, uh, I was gonna take a picture of the answer, but I guess I can't. So. Go back up to here. Or actually, I think I can even just find the question by looking at the answer. Okay, so the next one is six point three point eight. So this one's a little strange. So x, x to the power of four plus sixteen. Uh, so it says, uh, saw, um, write this as a product of linear factors. Strange, the question, the answer's not linear factors. Let me read the question properly. Let me go to the actual question. Six point, did I look at it right? Six point three point eight. Product, oh, no, no, no. Factor x to the power of four plus sixteen as the product of two quadratic polynomials, each of which cannot be factored further without using complex numbers. Oh, uh, I don't know. Let's see, can I even do this? Let's see. So. Um, okay, well, first of all, there's a difference of squares. So, yeah, so it's gonna be x squared squared. Oh, no, it's not a difference of squares. Never mind, it's a sum. Um, so, hmm. What do I do? Okay, I guess I can just treat this as. Huh. I guess I just treat this as equals zero. And then this is x to the power of four equals negative sixteen. But that's not helping us factor this as, this is just gonna find the solutions. This is just gonna find the solutions. Okay, it says hint, oh, no, 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 hint for the wrong question. Oh, okay. Oh, wait, I think this might not be part of the things. I think I read it wrong. I think this is supposed to be a seven. Yeah, this is supposed to be a seven. And then we're doing the last question. Yes. So eight is not part of the suggested problems. That's why I don't know how to do it. So seven is just asking for actually the solutions. So this makes sense now. So it's x to the power of four equals, so we're just solving for x now. Um, so it's gonna be sixteen e to the i pi, right? So x equals the fourth root of sixteen. Oops, fourth root of sixteen. Ah, I can't type sixteen. It's just two. For some reasons, I don't know my power, for some reason, I don't know my powers of two. And, oh yeah, right, this is two pi k here, right? So this is gonna be pi over four plus pi k over two. Honestly, I'll write this as two pi k, two pi k over four. Because it makes the adding of the, uh. Yeah, it makes, it makes the adding of the things easier. Okay, so omega one, where k equals, uh, sorry, omega zero, where k equals zero, is just gonna be two e to the i pi over four. So omega one, where k equals one, is going to be two e, e to the i, and now that's going to be, uh, three pi over four. Right? Uh, omega two, where k equals two, is going to be, um, two e to the i, um. It's nine pi, oh, no, am I doing this wrong? Five pi over four. Two, four, four pi over four, five pi over four. Yeah, sorry. My addition didn't work there in my head. And finally. Omega three, where k equals three, is going to be two e to the i, uh, seven pi over four. Okay. Now, of course, we just turn these into, did I do the right factors? Yeah, did the right amount of factors. So turn these into, um, standard form. It's just gonna be two cos pi over four plus sine pi over four i. So cos pi over four is root two over two. So two, root two over two plus. Root two over two i. So that's just, um, root two plus root two i. Okay, there's one. Next is going to be two cos three pi over four plus sine three pi over four i. It's just gonna be two. Um, I think it's going to be the similar thing, maybe just negative. Cos, yep, exactly. So negative root two over two plus root two over two i. So this is going to be negative root two plus root two i. There's our second solution. I'll just highlight the solutions, so we have it here. Um, next one is two cos five pi over four. Uh, and I'm fairly certain this will just be each of these with a negative sign in front of it. Positive. Negative on the, yeah. It's a little strange, actually. Okay, I don't know. Uh, plus sine five pi over four i. Good. Um, and now we need the, all these numbers. So cos is, so two times negative root two over two. Sin is also negative root two over two i. So it's exactly what I said, it's the negative of the first one, right? So negative root two minus root two i. And I'm willing to bet money it's gonna be root, it's gonna be a root two minus root two i for the next one. So two cos seven pi over four plus sine seven pi over four i. And then, so. So cos is going to be positive root two over two. Root two over two. And this will be minus root two over two i. And so this is root two minus root two i, uh, no brackets. And there's our four solutions. So to write this, to write this starting thing as a product of linear factors, well, we just take each factor and we just say, well, x minus each one, root two plus root two i. Okay, there's our first factor. X minus the second one, minus root two plus root two. Plus root two i. Uh, third one is going to be x minus negative root two minus root two i. And then final one is gonna be x minus root two minus root two i. Yeah, there you go. And there's our answer written as the product of linear factors. Of, yeah. That's right. Okay, just a couple more. So A five B D. So this is from Nicholson. Now I think they're, they're done with Cutler. Yeah, just Nicholson. Maybe I'll just copy these two down at the bottom, so I don't have to scroll up all the time. So A five B D from Nicholson. So, gotta find that now. Oh, okay. These actually aren't that interesting. I don't know why I chose them. Um, we pretty much have been doing them the whole time, so. That's it. Uh, I will just do the quadratic question. So they actually will, we'll skip, we'll skip A five. I don't, you don't need to do like, we've been doing that with these ones. Like, it's, it's just solved for the, the solutions. Four solutions and three solutions. Um, but I like that trick now. So if anyone has a situation, I, I won't do the whole question, but A five B is x cubed equals negative eight? Well, you can just immediately go x cubed equals eight e to the i, uh, e to the i pi. And then, now you're already in complex form. And now it's so much easier, it's like it skips a bunch of steps there for how to get to, uh, the, uh, the answer, right? But it's, it's correct. If you were to work this out, this would be the same thing as, uh, negative, uh, negative eight plus zero i. It's the same thing. Okay, so anyways, that's just the, it's a little trick for that one. Okay, so A eleven B D, that's what we're doing now, from Nicholson. So, uh, I think we did D already, so, but maybe actually still, maybe I should do A ten? Okay, let's, let's start with B. I think I did D in the last stream, so I won't do that, but I'll, I'll do another one from A ten then. So, um, B is x squared minus x plus one minus i equals zero. So use the quadratic formula to solve for this, okay? A equals one, B equals negative one, C equals one minus i. Okay? So just stick it in. There you go. So, uh, one plus minus, negative B plus or minus the square root of, uh, B squared, one, minus four A C. All over two. Okay. One plus minus, now this is gonna be, uh, one minus four plus four i on the square root, all over two. So one plus minus square root of, so this is a complex number, negative three plus four i all over two. Okay. So now we need the two solutions for what, what this is, right? So we need to find some number z squared that is negative three plus four i. So I'm gonna have to write this as a complex number, right? Uh, as a polar form. So r equals, um, it's going to be, uh, nine plus sixteen. So that's our magnitude there. So that's gonna be five. Five? Yep, plus sixteen is twenty-five. Okay, let's see if this works. Z squared equals, I'm gonna factor out a five, so it's gonna be five times negative three over five plus four over five i. Seems to me like this is not gonna give me any kind of, like. Well, let's see what happens. Yeah, so because cos inverse of negative three over five, that's just some decimal. Um. But still possible. Did I make a mistake here? Negative B plus or minus B squared minus four A C. All over two A. Um, one minus four, negative three plus four i. Yeah, looks right to me. Okay, well, so then I guess we just do need to actually find this complex number. So it's. Uh, I, I feel like I'm doing something wrong when I'm doing the angle and it's not some multiple of pi, right? But, or like some division of pi. But I think it should work nonetheless. Although it could be kind of off, because I have to get a bunch of decimal places. Well, let's just see. So, uh, here, cos theta equals negative three over five, sine theta equals four over five. So here, theta is giving me around about two point two one four. Here, theta is giving me around about, so sine inverse of four over five, uh, zero point something. So zero point nine two seven two nine. Right? Uh, so let's just see quickly. I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to use this one. So let's see, if I, if I do the sine of that other angle, two point two one four, I get about zero point eight, which is, um, which is what four, four over five is. Yeah, so we're gonna use this angle up here. Okay, so two point two one four. Actually, I'll, I'll be more specific. Since we're, since we're, we know we're gonna use that angle, I'll get a more exact answer. So cos inverse of negative three over five, two point two one four two nine seven. What's up there? Okay, so obviously this is weird to have an angle like that, but let's see if it works. So. Um. I remember having trouble with this before. I don't think I've ever done one with this angle like that, but we'll see. So in polar form, this is going to be, uh, z squared equals five e to the i. I'll just say theta, because, but this equals theta, okay? Plus two pi k. Right? Good. So then finally, z equals, uh, square root of five. Square root of five e to the i theta over two plus pi k. And of course, we're gonna have two solutions. So, um, our first solution is going to be omega zero, k equals zero. So that's gonna be root five e to the i theta over two. Okay, so then this is going to be, um, I'll write this right away as root five cos theta over two plus sine theta over two i. So let's see if I can do this, so. Um. Can I store this as a? No, probably store. I don't know. Okay, so theta was that. So cos of two point two one four two nine seven over two. Yeah, well, it doesn't look too good. This, I got some decimal, zero point four four seven. Definitely not the answer. Um, plus zero point, let's see what the answer is in the book. So let's see. I think I went way off there. Um, scroll all the way down. So I was doing number eleven. B, yeah, there's some nice answer, negative i, one plus i for B. So not this. Um. So I think it's something here. There's something here going on, but I don't know what I'm doing. So. No. This part isn't right. The square root of that. Again, I feel like I'm doing something wrong on the inside here, but I'm probably not. Square minus four A C. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how to do it, that, that didn't work. And I'm not doing anything. Doesn't seem like I'm doing anything wrong. Okay, anybody got any, anybody got any ideas? Um. There we go. Yeah, I don't know. Didn't work for some reason. What could we possibly be doing wrong? This. There was some trick about this. There was some, I remember there were some tricks about this stuff. One plus or minus one minus four. I don't know, I keep reading this over. I'm sure I'm doing this right, unless I'm doing one minus four is negative three plus four i. Four minus four, I think it's four plus four. Yeah, I don't know. Does anybody got an idea?
Which question is it in the textbook?
A, A eleven B. A Nicholson. B. Nicholson. Um, complex number didn't work. Hmm. The answer, yeah, the answer didn't give us any hints. I thought the answer would give us a hint. The answer is negative i, one plus i. Those were the two solutions, which would mean that. How is it one plus i? This is one half, maybe there's two up here? Am I doing the right question? What am I doing? Let's see. First. Um. Oh, I'm in the wrong section. Nicholson. A. Eleven. B. X squared minus x plus one minus i. Yes, that's good. Equals zero. B. Huh. Can't factor that. Could I? No, I can't. Yeah, I have, I have no idea. No idea? Maybe I'll put this into some sort of, I'll, look it up.
Um, I can send you like the solution manual if you want.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I always forget there's a solution manual for this book. Someone's probably sent it to me, or it's probably in the, pinned in the chat here.
Yeah, somewhere.
Uh, no, mid, no, I don't see it in the chat. Maybe homework help? Um. I don't see it. No, did you get, maybe could you send me the solution manual? I don't have, or I could Google it. Uh. Yeah, solution, Nicholson.
I sent it in the chat.
Oh, you did, okay. Which chat?
Uh, the discussion.
Discussion, yeah. Okay, and we're looking for. So I'm going to page one eighty-three. One eighty-three, and I want. No, what am I doing? Oh, no, I'm just not there. Eleven B gives. Okay, this is the solution. So everything's right until here. This is all wrong, obviously, because I'm, you know, doing weird stuff that doesn't make sense. So, is that? And this is all wrong, too. Okay. So here, they write it as this. So one half times one plus or minus. Yeah. Root negative three plus four i. Okay, just a slight difference, but obviously that's the same thing. So, yeah, the same thing. We're looking for w squared, which is negative three plus four i. If w equals a plus b i, then w squared equals a squared minus b squared. Sure. Oh, no, plus. Two A B i. I guess that's just something to know. W squared. Okay. So w squared equals this, this equals this. That means that negative three has to be equal to this part and four i has to be equal to this part. Yeah. So negative three has to be equal to a squared minus b squared and four has to be equal to two A B. I just got rid of the i from both of them. Um, and then we, after this, we can just do it like a linear. Yeah. Famous. Yeah, so we can just go here. Well, okay, so, uh, I can also take a two off of you, so I'm gonna use this equation. So two equals A B, so A equals two over B, right? So I can put that into here, negative three, uh, two over B squared minus b squared minus three equals, uh, I'll write that as four. Over B squared minus b squared. So multiply everything by b squared. So negative three b squared equals four minus b to the power of four. Um. Yep, that looks right. Then. Rearrange it a little bit, so it's gonna be b to the power of four minus three b squared, uh, oops, minus four. Equals zero. Uh, k equals b squared. So this is k squared minus three, k minus four equals zero. I just like to set it as a different variable. So, uh, to solve this, right, we need two numbers that, that's a four at the end here. Two numbers that add to negative three, multiply negative four, so, um, negative one, nega, uh, nope, negative. Negative four and one. Multiply negative four, adds negative three, yep. So k minus four, k plus one. So our two solutions, b squared minus four. Um, b squared plus one. So our two solutions are b squared equals four, b equals plus minus two. B squared equals negative one. B equals, can I say plus minus i? I guess so. Let's see what this does. There you go, here. Um. So A is plus or minus. Oh, no, they did it with A, but that doesn't really matter. So then A, what are the options for A? Well, A is either. Um, what was A again? A is two over B. A equals two over B. So it's either A is plus or, A equals plus or minus one, if it's plus or minus two, right? Or A equals plus or minus one over i? No, I guess we don't count the i? Yeah, we don't count the i. So we just count. Yeah. I don't know why we don't count the i, but in the solution, you don't count the i, because that, I guess, makes things more complicated. I don't know. Oh, I guess they're not real solutions? And we're looking for real solutions? Yeah, we're looking for real solutions for A and B, I guess, yeah. Yes, never mind, the coefficients of A and B have to be real. So, um, then our only two solutions are B equals plus or minus two, A equals plus or minus one. So w equals, um. Uh, plus or minus one. Plus or minus two i. So I guess you can just write that as w equals plus or minus one plus or mi, uh, one. Plus two i. Yeah, there you go. Okay, and so then finally, we can go back to here, this, this equation right here. Scroll C. Okay. And so then the solutions, w is plus or minus one minus, right, one plus two i. So our final set of answers will be one half times, so, uh, solution one, I guess, x one. I don't know if it was x, yeah, it was x, it's gonna be one plus one plus two i, right? So this is gonna be x one equals a half times two plus two i, which is one plus i. Okay, there's our first solution. And then our second solution will be x two, which is gonna be a half times one minus one plus two i. So this is gonna be, um, a half times zero minus. So this is gonna be, um, a half times zero minus two i. So that's just gonna be negative i. And those are the two solutions, those are the two solutions. Okay, so, a weird one, definitely a weird one, so what, what happened? We, um, I tried to just put in the fa, in the quadratic formula. Okay, I ended up here. I decided I was gonna try to look for w squared using polar form. Not a good idea. What I should do is just, since it's squared, I know that w squared is gonna be equal to a squared minus b squared plus two A bi. Guess that's a good thing to remember. Uh, probably could work it out, uh, definitely could work it out. And, um, because if you just, if you just did it, right, a plus bi, I'm not gonna do it, but if you just did a plus bi times a plus bi, I'm sure you'd end up with this. So then you know that the parts have to match, right, so negative three has to be equal to that, and four has to be equal to two A bi, or two A B. And then you have your small system, solve for the two solutions, ignore the complex solutions, because these coefficients have to be real. Has to be, a and b have to be real. Um, and then, uh, and then just put that into the, the quadratic formula for your thing. Okay? Definitely a weird one, definitely a weird question. Um... Well, someone mentioned. Oh, in announcements, there was some announcements. Okay, um, so, I guess I'll do one more from the textbook and then that'll be it. Okay? So I will do something from A ten. And I think I'm gonna do... Wait, A ten is what? Maybe I won't do A ten. Oh yeah, it gives you one root, and they give you the other. Um, well, so, one thing to remember for this qua, so A ten is saying this'll be quick, A ten B, let's say, okay, so, it's saying x squared plus i x minus four minus two i equals zero. It gives you one of the roots, u equals minus two. Right? Gives you one of the roots, and you wanna f, find the other root. Right, so, just gonna check the answer just so I can explain this properly. We, how is it a different? Okay, what I remember is, let me look at this, sum of two solutions, I don't remember the formula. Solutions to quadratic. Um, yes, here. So the two solutions to the quadratic, so if you have u one plus u two, those are the two solutions, that's gonna be equal to negative b over a. Right? So if we know one of them, negative two plus the second solution is equal to negative i over one. Right, well then, it's pretty clear, u two is gonna be equal to two minus i. And there you go, there's your other solution. Knowing this is a very useful tool. Knowing that the two solutions add to that, so if you find one solution, it's pretty easy to find the other. In fact, if the coefficients are, if the starting coefficient is one, then it's just negative of the second coefficient, but just remember the formula, there you go. And then it's, uh, not too bad. Okay, but other than that, that's all I chose for chapter six, so unless people have specific other questions for chapter six, then that'll be it for today. But, yeah, again, unless you have anyone else.
Wait, Adam?
Yeah?
Oh, what, what did you search to get that rule?
Uh, sum of two solutions to a quadratic.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Because I just forgot, I thought, I thought it was gonna be, uh, I was gonna say two B over A. Two B over A, but it's not that, it's, it's negative B over A, so I just, good thing I checked, or we would have been, gotten the wrong answer. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I, I've never seen that before, so I, I think I should look at that.
Yeah, yeah. So the sum of two, and just from my screen in front of me, the product of the two is c over a. C over a. U one times u two, it's just on my screen right here, because it's part of the, similar idea, but I, we haven't heard that anywhere, so, I don't know if that's useful. Yeah. But yeah, okay, so other than that, then that's it for today, here, I'll, uh... Oh no, wrong one, okay, I guess I'll do this for a second, yeah, sure. This is a good way to end it. So unless anyone has any more questions?
What are we gonna go for, like tomorrow?
So tomorrow, I guess I may as well go back out of this now, so tomorrow... Um... I hope you can still see the screen, can I, can you still see, I, I minimized it, I hope that didn't break anything.
Yeah.
Okay, so... Uh, in the session, we got, like, yesterday, we made it through, I think we finished chapter we didn't do chapter two, did we? Chapter two is, no, we did not do chapter two, so we, we're gonna do cha, tomorrow, we're gonna do chapter two and chapter three. That's what we're gonna do. Okay, so all these selected problems I did, and then any other particular problems that people have, but these are the ones I chose, so... And I will knock off some of the dollars, yeah. Um, but yeah. Other than that, that's everything. No problem, Andre. Have a good night. Oh, he's not here anymore, okay, well. Okay, bye, bye.
Bye.
Bye, have a good night. Hi, everybody.
So tomorrow, we're doing chapter three and two, right?
Yeah, chapter two and three, yeah, these, specifically these problems, and then whatever people want me to do. That's at seven fifteen, oh no, six fifteen tomorrow, six fifteen tomorrow.
Alright, good night.
Good night, have a good night, everybody.
Uh, thank you, bro.
No problem, no problem, see ya.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.